Mayor, would you like to call the meeting to order?
Yes, call this meeting to order. City of North Kansas City, Missouri, regular council meeting and motion to close part of the meeting amended October 6, 2020. Call roll.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Toll, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is the approval of the agenda and staff would like to ask that the second executive session, we, we actually put out an amended agenda yesterday, uh, thinking that we had an external party that wanted to us to have a discussion, uh, but that party did indicate that they would prefer that that be deferred until your next meeting. So I would ask that the second executive session that is on your agenda be removed. Are there any other comments on the agenda?
Um, is, I have a question about the consent agenda. Um, it would now be a time to request an item be moved for an up and down vote.
Yes, sir, it would.
Uh, I would, I would ask that we pull, uh, seven and have some discussion and, uh, vote.
All right. So the typical way to go would be that that would become the first item under new business.
Okay.
And so, uh, any other, uh, discussion about the agenda? May I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
All right. The next item is comments from the public and I do have several comments to read into the record. I might ask everyone to mute themselves. We're hearing some noises. Thank you. Uh, so the first, uh, the first comment from the public for me to read into the record is from, uh, rhythm River North District. And it reads, uh, dear city council members, Mayor Stilo and members of city staff, I write again on behalf of the 50 independently owned storefronts along our commercial corridor with consideration on a second round of CARES Act funding. Every business is different and is facing likewise different circumstances during this public health pandemic. I'm pleased to see wide enforcement of masks and increased outdoor eating and drinking throughout North Kansas City.
Hey Eric, can we pause?
Yeah, I, I hear the echoing.
It's big.
All right. I'll continue now. Uh, as you know, the seasons change quickly in this region and winters are already especially tough for business owners who usually rely on banking summertime revenues from visitors to get them through. But this is not a normal year by any stretch. Each and every business is doing everything they can to reinvent their business model and I'm proud to see the grid on display from our local shops. But for many who are reliant on outdoor safety protocols to keep their doors open, there are needs for winterizing this business and keeping it steady while still deterring a viral outbreak here in North Kansas City. Unlike other districts in Kansas City, we've done a great job of keeping things at bay and I credit outdoor business to a lot of that. I ask that any considerations be made to businesses looking to fund these special considerations for the winter so that they may make it over the hop to, God willing, a spring season where we start seeing some vaccine breakthroughs. There are businesses who did not take part in the first round of grants that I think should get precedence. There are also special considerations to be paid to places like the Rhino, Christine's Firehouse and Screenland whose business models will not return to anything resembling normalcy until we can all be indoors safely at singular music and entertainment events. They each are digging in deep to reinvent, call in favors from regulars and utilize any resources they can to make it over this hump. Screenland's pivot to outdoor films has been an impressive example of what can be done with these types of funds to keep these gems in our community and help get locals through a very tough time. With the right support, we can see more of this to get us through the winter. I appreciate your consideration of these things in tonight's deliberations and that's from Joe Gower, co-founder, River North District Business League. The next comment is from Rita D. Pierce. Uh, my name is Rita D. Pierce. I live at 2117 Erie Street and our home faces the one-way portion of the street. We often see bicycles going the wrong way down our street. I also observe bicycles that run stop signs and red lights throughout the city. These practices are dangerous for the rider and vehicles alike. Please remember that all traffic laws apply to bicycles in our community. Thank you. And the third and final comment, uh, for me to read into the record. One moment. This is from Sarah Shekels. City Council and Mayor, I'm writing today in regard to a few topics on the agenda tonight. First, I'm urging you to extend Screenland Arbor's outdoor movie conditional use permit. These movies have been quite a hit since they started and Screenland needs the extra support these outdoor movies provide. They are looking at a bleak new movie release schedule until at least spring and many people are only comfortable enjoying movies outside. This is a small, simple thing we can do to support this awesome local business. Secondly, I would like to speak about the CARES Act funds. Upon reviewing the memorandum regarding the CARES Act, it states there's approximately $175,000 remaining after expected PPE expenses for the rest of 2020. I would urge council to utilize this remaining amount to support our local businesses and families in need. I know several families and businesses are facing an extremely tough time in the coming months after depleting the initial funds they received. As a resident, I want this community and the people and businesses that make it such a great place to thrive. I worry without significant help from these remaining funds, we may lose businesses to this pandemic and some families face a terrible outlook for the coming months. As it seems less and less likely, the federal government is going to approve more stimulus money before November. I urge you to please consider this over the mentioned updates to City Hall. I feel the plastic shields would be a great benefit to staff, but the touchless lights, toilets, sinks, et cetera, seem a costly endeavor at this time, especially when proper hand washing will mitigate the need for touchless items, especially to the tune of $157,000. Next, I want to show my support for the Equity and Inclusion Committee and urge the council to pass this. I think this is a fantastic way to improve our diverse community, our diverse community. Lastly, please extend the parklet licenses. This has been a hit with some businesses and as the weather cooperates, I think it should continue as a small way to help them. Also a thought, could heaters be approved as an eligible expense to supplement these parklets during the colder months? Thank you so much for your time and consideration, Sarah Shekels. That concludes the comments from the public to be read into the record. Uh, and in the control room, do we have anyone raising their hand, uh, to make a comment from the public?
Mr. Berlin, we do have a couple of people that in the waiting room that would like to give a public comment. Uh, the first one is David Johnson. Mr. Johnson, I have unmuted you. Can you please go ahead and provide your public comment?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This is, uh, David Johnson. I'm the chairman of Max's and the owner of Chicken and Pickle. Thank you for your time. I remain past concerned about the parking situation at the ground laws. I believe at your last council meeting, when you all approved the amendment to allow 60 spots to be taken out of it, you were not fully informed of all the things going on. I asked city staff before that meeting to pull it and make sure you guys understood that the proposed off-site parking is currently not accessible. I want to go on the record that I'm for the apartments. The developers are good friends of mine. The Millers are good friends of mine. But we have a real parking disaster brewing over there and it's going to get worse. I would ask you to go on Thursday through Sunday and note that during COVID, that parking lot is full. And now we're going to go from 120 spots to 80 spots and the apartments are going to be underparked. And I ask you to walk and look where the people, where the acts, the other parking is, that people are not going to park there and they can only get there through, through the Miller ground. I've been encouraging Millers and everybody to talk, but I believe it was handled inappropriately. You weren't fully informed and we have a real problem there. I will tell you, I've talked to all the constituents around it and all of them are upset. The business owners, the other owners, uh, everybody around there is upset with what, how this has happened and where it's going and I think it needs your attention. So, uh, uh, thank you for that. I'd also like to say that, uh, I think you should instruct city staff, Eric Berlin and his people. If somebody sends them an email about a problem on an area, I sent an email to Eric Berlin and he, uh, and I copied Sarah Copeland on it. Uh, within an hour, she forwarded that email to the property owner who I was, uh, discussing a problem with. I think that's highly inappropriate. It should not have happened. And it was very upsetting. It destroys the confidence of business owners to talk to city staff and others. If it, um, somebody that's just CC'd on the email is forwarding that email outside without a request. Uh, so it was very upsetting to me. I will tell you, I've been meeting with business owners and working for the common good of North Kansas City. I've done as much for this city as anybody and most of the owners are very upset with staff. Uh, NT Realty is very upset, the Millers, others. Uh, we shouldn't be like this. Uh, I believe we're customers of the city staff and we should be treated that way. I think our phone calls should be returned and I think that, uh, there should be some dignity and respect shown to us. So, sorry, I'm a little wound up. I want nothing but the best for North Kansas City. I'm working night and day to do that. I think I've done some great things here. But look at Chicken and Pickle. I spent millions of dollars renovating the roof and now a, a bunch of parking is going away. 10 parking spots on Burlington are going away. I understand that's a long-term plan. Now 120 spots in construction. It's already full and we're, and this is COVID, so please, uh, get the city staff to focus and work with us. I'm trying to do the right thing. Like to end on a high note, I cannot tell you how responsive, uh, Mr. Barzey has been and, uh, various members of the city council here. I applaud you for that. I know you're not highly paid. I know everybody here is trying to do the right thing. Eric and Sarah are trying to do the right thing, but it's how you do it and it's how you treat the people. Thank you for your time.
I'm now going to ask Jessica Loya to go ahead and provide your public comment.
Can you guys hear me? Am I, okay.
Yes, we hear you.
Perfect. I just wanted to say that, uh, small businesses in this community are one of the things that make this community such an amazing place to live. Um, you know, whether it's going up to Screenland, watching a movie, seeing a show at Rhino, heading the Little Store for dinner. Um, having all of these accessible businesses within walking distance is one of the best things about this city. And it would be such a shame if these businesses could not continue because they do not have the ability to, uh, remain open right now for various reasons. And I know that these CARES funds, you know, while they could go towards the, the city hall or whatever, like the real priority right now is these small businesses and making sure that they can continue to thrive in our community. Um, and I know, uh, almost everybody I know in this community feels very similarly about the fact that these small businesses are one of the best aspects of what makes North Kansas City so amazing. Um, and I just wanted to throw my support behind ensuring that those remaining CARES funds go towards helping those small businesses because they are struggling right now and we know that a lot of them won't be able to keep their doors open for much longer. And they're all currently doing everything that they can to try and make that happen. And I think as you know, our city government, it's your guys' responsibility to make these decisions that ensure that these businesses are being looked out for. Um, and beyond that, I just wanted to say that I, I fully support the Equity and Inclusion Committee. Um, and I'm honestly just so thankful for everything you guys do. Um, that's really all I had to say tonight.
Do we have anyone else raising their hand?
We sure do. Shannon Wheeler? Go ahead and provide your public comment. Shannon Wheeler, can you go ahead and please unmute yourself and provide your public comment?
Oh yeah, thank you. All right. Sorry about that. Okay. So, um, yes, so Shannon Wheeler. So we live on Fayette Street. We have lived in Norhtown for, uh, five years and we have stayed because of the increase of entrepreneurs and small businesses, the walkability and, um, of places to shop and to eat. And so, um, I second what, uh, Jessica Loya had said about any CARES funds going to these, um, small businesses and what makes Norhtown um, a special place to be where everyone wants to live. Um, I also appreciate the Equity and Inclusion Committee as well. Thank you.
If there are any other attendees that would like to provide a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. Mr. Berlin, at this time, we are not seeing anyone else indicating that they would like to provide a public comment.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Roberts, I, I do believe we do have, uh, somebody else who's looking to make a public comment, do we not?
I believe we do. You give me one second. Okay. OJ Reader and Joe Smith, if you want to unmute and come on video. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Board of Alderman. I have to admit, we're, uh, coming here for some false pretenses. I'm not actually Joe Smith. Uh, my name is DJ Garrett. I'm the city administrator in Platt City and the past president of the Missouri City Managers Association. Uh, the, uh, professional association for city managers in Missouri. And we have a, a pleasant surprise for you hopefully this evening. One of the, uh, things the City Managers Association does is recognize that its members who have performed exceptional service. We have, uh, generally we make these presentations at our spring conference, but as you've heard for the last year, things are a little bit different this year. And so I'm joined tonight by, uh, Eric Johnson, who's shown up as OJ Reader. He's the, uh, city administrator of Blue Springs and the president, uh, chairman of the awards committee. And we have the pleasure tonight of presenting one of our most prestigious awards to one of your staff members. And so with that, I'll turn this over to, uh, to Eric and this is a true pleasure for us to do this tonight.
Hey, thank you, DJ and, uh, members of the city council appreciate your time here. Uh, I mean, this is, this is all kinds of good fun doing this stuff. Via Zoom or whatever we're doing these days, but, uh, we had hoped to be able to do this in person and, uh, but that was not the case. Uh, as you know, you, you stole an employee from me. Yes, you did. And, um, Kim and I had, uh, worked together for, uh, almost eight years in, in the city of Blue Springs. And, um, and, and prior to that, our paths al- also crossed, uh, working for the city of Kansas City, Missouri. And, um, because, uh, I, I am a former mem- former recipient of this award. Kim, what you're going to get is the Outstanding Assistant Award. Yes. Everybody do this. This is, uh, our, our virtual presentation to you tonight. Yes. Way to go, Kim. Uh, I, I just want to say, um, there are many, many people who compete for this and a lot who don't get it, who deserve it. And I can tell you that, uh, I've been trying to figure out a way to steal Kim back and bring her back to Blue Springs, but you guys won't let her go. And
You take this guy off the call now.
Do what?
To take him off the call now.
Yes. Um, I know you have a long meeting tonight and I just want to let you know that, um, Kim is amazing and her peers and her colleagues and, and those that maybe she, she doesn't know, know that she does an amazing job and, uh, she represents integrity, character. When you took, I heard, I've been on the call for a while, listening to some of the comments and I understand the business owners and the parking and the, uh, uh, the redevelopment, uh, all the things that all of you get paid the big bucks to do and take care of. And, uh, and I know that, that Kim and Eric Berlin, I, I'm not, I'm not lobbying for anything. This is not an op-ed. I just know that you have a couple of people there that you can really trust to do their job, to do it well, to do it very professionally. And, uh, when they get it right, they get it right and they give you the credit. And when they get it wrong, they take the heat. Okay? That's how it works. And, um, so, Kim, it is my pleasure tonight to give you the virtual presentation from Stephen of the Richard R. Knoll Outstanding Assistant City Manager Award. Kim, Kim Nakahodo, there you go. Well deserved.
Thank you, guys. You, you got me big time and I, Stephen, I'm gonna have to, he totally duped me. I appreciate it. I'm extremely humbled and honored. I think that it, it's very special to me. I worked with Richard Knoll, so those of us who worked with him understand what this award means and I'm extremely humbled and I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Hey, so Kim, sometime when we're having an offline conversation, ask me about where the name OJ Reader came from.
All right. Eric and DJ, thank you so much for appearing at tonight's council meeting. Council, uh, city council, thank you for bearing with us. It was a surprise to them too. So they were wondering what was going on. We, uh, thank you guys very much. And Kim, this is very well deserved. And the, the good news is you won the Rich Knoll Award. The bad news is you got to run the meeting for the next, uh, however long. So, uh, we're going to go back to normal business. Eric and DJ, thanks again. I'll be talking to you soon.
All right. Good night. Thank you, everybody. Keep up the good work. You helped me get out of a planning and zoning commission meeting tonight, so I really appreciate it. All right.
All right, guys. You're gonna, we're gonna let you go. And Kim, again, congratulations. Uh, next item is the consent agenda. Composed of item six, approval of regular council meeting minutes from September 15th, 2020. And number seven, short-term conditional use permit extension for the Screenland Armor Outdoor Movies. Is there a motion?
Move, move to approve again.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper? Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Number eight, appointment of Gene Brunns to Tax Increment Financing Commission and Industrial Development Authority.
Uh, Mayor Stilo has appointed, uh, Gene Brunns to fill the unexpired terms of Carl Morris, who has resigned from the Tax Increment Financing Commission and Industrial Development Authority. Uh, and the appointment is before the city council for approval. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Smith?
So, uh, I, I asked for this to be pulled off the agenda, not because I have anything personally against this appointment. I don't know, uh, former mayor Brunns very well at all. Um, but I did look down the, the list of the TIF Commission and the IDA. Uh, at this point, uh, there, other than Rita, it's, it's all male. Uh, it's all, um, single race. There's no real diverse voice on the committee at this point. So, um, I wanted to raise that, uh, concern that I, I would like to see some sort of reach for somebody who has a different sort of opinion or a different viewpoint. Um, I don't disagree that, uh, former mayor Brunns has a lot to, uh, a history with the city. He's got a lot of experience and I think his input is valuable, but I, I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that issue that we're adding just, uh, it's another, uh, more, more of the same kind of situation. So want to bring that up and, uh, we can proceed with the vote. There's no other discussion. Uh, Mayor Stila?
Yeah, this, uh, this tax, uh, this, this committee or commission isn't like most of them. You know, it's, you can pay, pick about anybody to be on a park board or a library board, but this tax thing, you kind of have to know what you're doing. And, uh, and I knew Gene Brunns had worked on this. Uh, I know, uh, well, it was Mike Smith. He was the one that kind of started the whole thing. And Gene was right in there during all that time. So I really felt like he had more experience and knowledge of how this works than anybody else.
Uh, Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, uh, you know, former mayor Brunns has got a lot of institutional knowledge that is going to be very helpful. I can see Jesse's point too, as well as maybe the city, you know, we've tried to do a, a good way to outreach with people and maybe that's what this Equity and Inclusion Committee can find us. Um, people of other races or, uh, you know, female or, or different group of people that are qualified and, and, and have all, have that kind of knowledge. But you know, Mr. Brunns brings so much to the table on this, got a lot of knowledge from the city. I mean, the guy was the mayor for, I think it was 12 years and a councilman for even longer than that. So, uh, I support his, uh, I support his, um, nomination and I also recognize Councilmember Smith's comments.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I support it too, but, uh, to the numbers, the item numbers be right, they're, they're not right the way you, uh, every spread. This is item seven, right?
Well, it moved on, onto the, as to become the first item under regular items. So it, it became number eight on, uh, it's sort of new number eight on the, uh, agenda.
Oh, okay. Modern math. I, I didn't take that modern math. I, I've moved to approve item eight then.
Uh, it looks like Councilmember Toll has a comment or a question.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jesse because I know that, that he believes that this person is definitely fits the bill, but if we don't start looking at each position carefully, it will be difficult to be intentional. So thank you for pumping the brakes on this and having a discussion and we can look at that going forward. I really appreciate that.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, Councilmember DeLong?
No, and I just echo what Councilmember Toll said as well. I mean, something, a conversation we've had before and it's definitely a conversation we need to have going forward. Certainly our boards of commission should, should reflect more closely the, the, the demographics Certainly, our boards of commission should should reflect more closely the the demographics of our town. And we have several that currently don't do that. So, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Can you call the roll please?
Okay, Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong? Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Number nine, public hearing water and sewer rates.
Thank you. At its meeting of July twenty first, twenty twenty, the city council provided direction to staff regarding sewer rates to charge customers in calendar year twenty twenty one. Pursuant to that direction, now before council for formal consideration, our ordinance is setting those rates in the following calendar year. The ordinance is called for an increase of fifteen percent in sewer rates and reduction of fifteen percent for water rates. A public hearing on the proposed increase in sewer rates is required by statute. The official notice for this public hearing also invited public comments on the change in water rates. Staff recommends that the council conduct a public hearing. Since we did have work sessions, have a work session on this and had discussion of that in July, it wasn't my intention to do any more of a a formal staff report, although if you had any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. At this point, Mr. Mayor, I might suggest that you open the public hearing.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. Any public comments?
If there is anybody in in the waiting room that would like to provide a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at this time. Mr. Berlin, I'm not seeing anybody indicating that they would like to provide a public comment at this time.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to close the public hearing?
Okay, let's close the public hearing.
And that concludes this item.
Okay, item ten, sewer rates for calendar year twenty twenty one, bill number seventy five forty nine, ordinance number ninety three forty six.
Uh, now before the council is the ordinance that I spoke of, increasing sewer rates by fifteen percent. Uh, Councilmember DeLong?
When do we plan on initiating our sewer rate study?
This fiscal year just started. We'll be getting that underway very soon.
Okay. And do you know, uh, so I was trying to look at Kansas City, Missouri's rates. It looked like normally they increase them or they they address that in March. But it appears to be on hold for this year. Do you know why that is by chance?
They indicated due to COVID.
Okay, so they just haven't, okay. Because, I mean, it was anticipated.
They were actually set to increase them, and then about a month later, we got a letter saying that they were not going to.
Okay, yeah, because I I looked in it, looked like it was being held by the council. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
First reading?
Again.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing new sewer service charges, amending section thirteen point oh eight point oh two oh sewer charges of the code of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I'd like to move the bill number seventy five forty nine to be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number ninety three forty six.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing new sewer service charges, amending section thirteen point zero eight point zero two oh sewer charges of the code of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri. Number eleven, amending water rates for calendar year twenty twenty one, bill number seventy five forty eight, ordinance number ninety three forty five.
Uh, thank you. Now before the council is the ordinance that we spoke of during the public hearing, decreasing of the city's water rates by fifteen percent. Are there any questions?
First reading?
Again.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri by repealing sub paragraphs one and two of paragraph B of section thirteen point oh four point one four oh water rates and charges. And enacting in lieu thereof, new sub paragraphs one and two of paragraph B of section thirteen point oh four point one four oh of the code.
I move the bill number seventy five forty eight be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number ninety three forty five.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri by repealing sub paragraphs one and two of paragraph B of section thirteen point zero four point one four oh water rates and charges, and enacting in lieu thereof, new sub paragraphs one and two of paragraph B of section thirteen point oh four point one four oh of the code. Number twelve, health insurance renewal, twenty twenty one calendar year, bill number seventy five fifty, ordinance number ninety three forty seven.
Thank you. Uh, the city has received its medical insurance renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City for twenty twenty one. And at this time, I'd like to call on Dina Shaper of our, uh, health insurance consultant, uh, Lockton Companies. Dina?
Um, yes, hello. Thank you all very much for having me here tonight. Just wanted to give you a little bit of history and it's covered the entire health and welfare plan renewals for twenty twenty. First of all, um, do you want to go ahead to the next slide? The city has um, five plans through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City. There's three different plan designs and two different network options with the goal of meeting the needs of all the employees of the city. Um, there's a traditional PPO plan with a broad network and one with a narrow network, a high deductible plan with a reimbursement arrangement, both with a broad and a narrow network, and a qualified high deductible plan with a health savings account. Um, the narrow networks are typically low, uh, lower cost than employee and the city, um, as members are routed through a limited number of hospitals and providers. Blue Cross Blue Shield offered a flat renewal. When Lockton did our projection, we showed a need a decrease of two point six percent. North Kansas City is on a maximum premium program, which means you pay in the maximum premium. And then if your claims do not meet what the anticipated claims are, you get a refund of up to ten percent of those premiums. Because of that, we decided our our recommendation is to, um, accept the the flat renewal. Um, because if claims are lower, you will get that refund. For twenty twenty two, there were very slight changes to the Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage. They added a mindful program. I mean, for twenty twenty one, there's limited changes. They added a mindful program July first of twenty twenty, which is really, um, we'll get to the details about that in a minute, but it's really dedicated for mental health while being. And then there were a couple of changes to the prescription drug programs. If we look at the next slide, there is, um, just kind of a high level description of the medical plan options, because my understanding is that there's some new council members, so wanted to be able to show the different, um, plan designs. Again, there's two PPO options, two, um, HRA options, and one high deductible with HSA options. We can go on to the next slide. Um, just for the updates, so the mindful program is a behavioral health initiative that was implemented by Blue Cross in July, and it's fully to try and um, reduce the stigma around mental health and provide expedited treatment and triage to treat different, um, aspects of mental health. The other two programs that are we're recommending implementation for Ja- January of twenty one is on the prescription drug side. One is ninety day retail, where members can go receive ninety day supply for their maintenance medications at, um, any retail change for ju- for generic and brand name drugs. In the past, this has only been available through mail order. By enabling people to receive ninety day at retail, it allows for some bulk pricing and some increased discounts, which should lower, um, slightly lower the cost of drugs for the city. In addition, um, we're recommending the co-pay credit accumulator adjustment. So what this is, when someone orders a specialty drug through Optum Pharmacy and uses a co-pay card, they will only get credit for the actual dollars that they spend on that specialty drug, rather than the cost of the dollars and the co-pay card to their, um, deductible and out of pocket. This is a new program that, um, is being implemented by, um, all carriers across the board and most companies in order to even out that, um, the to get a little bit of the, um, help from the co-pay cards and and really even out what members are are paying, so that they are really getting credit for what they're paying. Not for, um, not enabling them to meet their deductible and out of pocket when they haven't actually paid dollars. Next slide. Um, just to give you an update on the COVID nineteen impact on your plan, there's been thirty eight members with claims, and, um, of those, thirty two have been paid claims. The rest went to the deductible and co-insurance for a total cost of four thousand three hundred and thirty six dollars. So knock on wood, there hasn't been much impact, um, from the city members for COVID nineteen, which is a great story. Next, next slide.
Hello?
Yep, sorry. Okay, um, the dental plan, there's also a zero, um, increase to the dental plan. It's through Guardian. There's two plans offered, an in-network only plan and a passive PPO plan, which basically says that you can go to any dentist in or out of network. And, um, it, uh, and your benefits are the same. Guardian offered a flat renewal, and then due to COVID nineteen, they offered two options. One would be a one month premium holiday or a two-year rate guarantee with that flat renewal. Our recommendation is to take that two-year rate guarantee, which would make the next renewal twenty twenty three. The next page shows just a little bit of the dental plans, uh, not recommending any changes to the plans. They're very generous plans with a fifteen dollar, hundred dollar annual max. The passive PPO does have deductible and co-insurance where, um, the in-network only plan, um, basically pays, um, for everything except for major services at a hundred percent. Next slide, um, the vision plan, the city offers vision coverage through VSP. VSP also offered a flat renewal with a twenty four month rate guarantee, so the next renewal on this plan would be twenty twenty three. You can see the benefit plan, um, above that. It's it's just a very standard vision plan. Next slide, um, the city offers life and accidental death and dismemberment through Mutual Omaha. This is sounding like a broken record. But they also offered a zero percent increase for twenty twenty one. Um, it's a one year, um, pass on rates. So the next renewal for that will be twenty twenty two. And finally, I think one more, a long-term disability, which is through Cigna. Cigna also extended the rate guarantee for twenty four months, so a zero percent increase for the next two years with the next renewal of twenty twenty three. So all in all, um, there's no changes to any of the benefit programs for twenty twenty one, and many of the, um, rate guarantees extend for, um, two years. Any questions?
Excuse me, Councilmember Clevenger?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. On the health insurance, um, what was the rate guarantee? Was it for one year or two years on that?
It's only one year. No healthcare companies will extend for two years, unfortunately.
Wanted to make sure on that. Um, and you talked about the narrow and the broader on the PPO. Does it still have both options?
Yes, they offer both options of both the PPO and the, um, health reimbursement plan. So that employees can choose if they're willing to go to a limited to number of hospitals, which are basically along the I thirty five corridor. They can pay a little bit less for premiums, um, but they're limited to the hospitals that they can go to.
Okay. And then the other question, this is for staff. Um, in our twenty twenty one budget, I can't remember, I know we were, uh, budgeting an increase, but it does not look like we're going to need that, correct, staff?
Yes, we budgeted five percent and the renewal, the renewal was zero.
Fantastic. Love it. Thank you.
Councilmember Toll?
I am very much in favor of great insurance and not going up. Sounds like a no-brainer. I was just curious. Um, since last year it increased by nineteen percent, that seems excessive. Do you guys ever shop around? I know, um, my employer changes their insurance company about every other year to get better deals. Nineteen percent just seemed like a really big jump.
Um, we do shop on a regular basis. We try to do it every three to five years. Um, because we find that, um, a long history with an insurance with a carrier sometimes smoothes, smoothes out those increases. Um, the city also has that benefit of if you do pay more premium in than is needed for claims, you can get up to ten percent back. Um, which is a unique contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City.
So have we ever gotten anything back?
Um, I believe so. I have not been on your account for that long. But I believe that there has been some reimbursements in the past, some.
I was just curious. I fully support, I fully support it. I was just curious about best practices.
So we haven't gotten it for a couple of years, but about three years ago, we got almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we have had, and we don't budget for that. So when that comes in, it's gravy. But the last couple of years, we have not gotten that.
And the good news is there's, you don't pay, if you go over what they expect, you don't pay any extra. So it's simply a refund back. It's a one-way, kind of a one-way deal.
Any other questions for Ms. Shaper? Well, um, Dina, thank you. And, uh, if you don't have any other questions, we do recommend approval of the ordinance renewing the, uh, city's health insurance for calendar year twenty twenty one.
First reading?
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart? Oh, he's gone. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance adopting and approving addendum to group contract maximum refund account together with the A, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Preferred Care Blue PPO Plan, B, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Personal Blue PPO Plan, C, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Blue Saber PPO Plan, D, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Blue Select Plus Personal Blue HRA Plan, and E, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Blue Select Plus PPO effective January first, twenty twenty one with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City regarding medical insurance benefits for the employees of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I move the bill number seventy five fifty be placed on second final reading, passes ordinance ninety three forty seven.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting and approving addendum to group contract maximum refund account together with the A, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Preferred Care Blue PPO Plan, B, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Personal Blue PPO Plan, C, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Blue Saber PPO Plan, D, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Blue Select Plus Personal Blue HRA Plan, and E, Benefit and Rate Confirmation for the City's Blue Select and E, benefit and rate confirmation for the city's Blue Select Plus PPO effective January first twenty twenty-one with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City regarding medical insurance benefits for the employees of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri. Number thirteen, Harris Rent Abatement Request.
Thank you. The city has received a letter from Harris, Kansas City requesting abatement to their twenty twenty-one rent payment in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, nine, four hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents. In the staff memo, we've attempted to just indicate some of the COVID-related and gaming-related hits that we are expecting in the fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for your consideration as you do consider this request. And at this time, I would like to call on Julie Sola, the general manager of Harris, to present the request to you, Julie.
Hi, good evening, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, yes, thank you, my name is Julie Sola, I'm the general manager. We just celebrated our twenty-sixth year of being open in North Kansas City and I have had the pleasure of working for the Harrah's in North Kansas City for twenty-four years. So I really appreciate the opportunity to present tonight and am always very appreciative of our relationship that we have established through the years of being in the city. So on behalf of Harris, North Kansas City, we are seeking any consideration of rent forgiveness for the days that we were closed during the closure mandate due to COVID nineteen. So as you've heard numerous businesses tonight present, you know, just challenges that have occurred with, you know, social distancing requirements or just being closed, we were closed for seventy-five days and clearly that was a very, very hard for us and then the impact that it has, you know, just even to the city is, is pretty significant. Um, we do pay two percent of our net gaming revenue each year to the city with a minimum rent obligation of two million dollars. We are asking for financial relief for the seventy-five days that we were closed between March seventeenth and May thirty-first. During this time, due to closure, we did not have any revenues, yet we still had a significant amount of expense that was, that we were occurring. During closure, we kept our security and surveillance teams on premises to keep the property safe, which proved to be a wise decision given the damage that was done to, you know, a property in Riverside. We also continued to pay our team members' insurance premiums. That totaled over one point three million dollars, but we felt that it was to really take care of ours. Also contributed all the one right in North Kansas City for distribution in our community. We donated all of our gloves that we had on site to North Kansas City Hospital. Even since reopening, we've donated space for N K C luncheons, blood drives, all in, you know, hopes to continue to help the community. So much like other businesses, we're finding ways to be creative, minimize our costs as much as possible. We're just hoping for any type of you know, consideration for any of the rent forgiveness during the closure. So I will pause and take any questions or answer anything that I might be able to.
Councilmember DeLong and then Councilmember Smith.
All right, thanks for joining us tonight, I just got to ask you a couple of questions about kind of your operation in general, how many people do you employ?
So right now, we have about seven hundred and fifty people on our payroll.
Okay, and so do you still have people on furlough?
Uh, we do not have anybody on furlough anymore.
Are they, are they now laid off or they all back on staff?
Yeah, we had, we had to do some layoffs. As of last week, we did pay their benefits through the end of the month and every single full-time employee was offered a severance package based on years of service and their actual position within the company. I mean, clearly, we're hopeful to hire, you know, all if we can back, once restrictions are lifted.
And so definitely what, the casino operation was shut down, but if that's back open, is it starting to pick back up on the hotel side and the other operations as well?
Yeah, I mean, we still are, we're about sixty-five percent occupancy on the hotel side right now and normally we're about ninety percent occupancy, so we certainly have seen a downturn there. All of our restaurants are not open and some of them are open with partial hours. So our buffet is not open and that's due to Clay County restrictions. And if it will ever open again, you know, that determination has not been made in its entirety. Our valet operation is not open and then many of our restaurants have limited hours. The casino has proved to be, you know, it's kind of sustained. We are down ten percent in overall admissions since we've reopened. But, you know, we're still faring well versus our competitors. And so we have, actually for our local comp set, which is just the Kansas City market, we have been number one in gross revenue since reopening and we've been number two in gross revenue for the state. We attribute, we attribute part of that is we opened right away with our twenty-four hour gaming operation where our competitors had limited hours and generally closed around one to two o'clock in the morning for the first several months. They are now open, you know, more consistently with the twenty-four hour timeframe.
All right, thank you for that, I got one more question.
Sure.
Normally just pull the, the gaming revenue numbers from the, is there a gaming commission? But September isn't out yet, so I mean, September kind of looking the same as the previous two months.
Yeah, we've actually seen quite a, it's quite a dip in September. I think that some of that stimulates from the CARES Act money going away. And so, you know, we saw, you know, some new faces in the building while people were, were getting some of the CARES Act money or that's how we kind of classified it, given it was a lot of retail business. But we've seen a dip in that in September.
All right, perfect, thank you so much.
Councilmember Smith. Julie, first off, thank you for hanging with us, I know you've been around since six P M. I know you're, you're on vacation, so we won't keep you too long.
No, that's fine.
You're, I know you're with the YMCA as well, you work with them and the charity fund and the hospital, we really appreciate all that. If I were in your shoes, I would certainly be making the same sort of request to, you know, you were closed for seventy-five days, that, that makes sense to ask. Where I'm kind of struggling with, based on this memo, it says we're projecting rent, a rent payment around two point five million dollars coming out of, and that's two percent of net gaming revenue. If I, if I'm doing the math correctly, it's hundred and twenty-five million dollars in net gaming revenue. And then to, for us to dock rent by four hundred and, nearly four hundred and eleven thousand, that comes right out of the operating fund of the city, which is funded by the tax dollars of our residents and businesses. So in effect, we would be forgiving rent, this contractual rent, using tax money. And that's where I find a little philosophical struggle in, in giving the rent back based on the contract, even though I recognize the struggle when there is still quite a bit of revenue going through the casino and the city's budget is a bit smaller than, than what that would look like. So I, I have a little bit of trouble philosophically with the request or with honoring the request, but I totally understand why you would ask. Can I ask, have, have other cities granted these sort of requests? Have they been made around the state or around the country? And has anybody else, any other city said yes to a rent abatement?
Um, what I would tell you is there's, most of the casinos, at least that Caesars owned, do not have lease agreements. And so they are not in the same situation that we're in. So I, I cannot speak for, you know, other casinos, like if an Argosy has a similar situation with Riverside, I cannot speak to that. I would just tell you in general, the rest of our company isn't structured the same way. And so I, I really couldn't comment. And I understand also where, where you're coming from and, you know, just as, you know, someone that operates this business, we felt like it's necessary to at least, you know, put it out there for any type of consideration that, that might be, you know, considered. You are correct with kind of your net gaming revenue estimate. We kind of forecasted revenues through the rest of the year and would kind of guess that our rent payment, you know, that we typically pay in twenty twenty-one would be two point six million dollars. And then if there was any type of, you know, lease forgiveness, it would take it down to two point one million dollars, which would still hit the, the obligation of the two million dollars per year. So we certainly understand that it is a big ask. You know, again, we have, we've, you know, pushed forward a lot of things just to take care of our team members and try to be good partners in the community, but, you know, ultimately, you all are the decision makers and we just wanted to put it out there for consideration.
I appreciate that and I thank you for all that you do in the community. I, at this point, I don't see you being able to support the abatement, but again, thank you for bringing this to our attention and, and all that you're doing. Councilmember Clevenger and then Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, a couple of things, first of all, thank you to Harris for coming. They've been a great partner for the city and they've been, you know, helping us with the business council lunches and things of that nature. Just for a little bit of history and background is that, I don't, I can't remember exactly what year it was, but the city was found that we were actually overcharging Harris on the rent and Harris did ask for that back, they were very gracious about asking for the rent money back and they gave us several, like three years to pay it back. I'm wondering, you know, I'm kind of on board with, it's difficult to, to abate this rent when we rely so heavily on it. Is there an option to, or for staff to maybe spread this out with, with spreading it out over paying it back or abating it, but eventually you're paying it back after a certain number of years? Would that be beneficial to you? We'd eventually be getting the money back or we would be getting the money back, but maybe over a two or three-year period.
Uh, Ms. Sola?
Yeah, I, I didn't know if that question was directed towards me. I mean, of course, we would take anything, any type of consideration, you know, during this timeframe. And, you know, I think that every business is doing the best that they can and, you know, continuing to try to take care of our obligations, so I think that we would consider anything and appreciate it.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, and I would say, you know, we really appreciate Harris and it's the only casino I go to, so I'm a card-carrying friend of the family, unfortunately sometimes. But I have seen a problem, you know, in the past, we used to give free ambulance service to our residents, but we charged everybody else. And the government stepped in and said, you can't do that, you have to charge everybody. And that was caused of Medicare, we, you know, but anyway, the point I'm trying to make is fairness. If we forgive a debt to the taxpayers of over four hundred thousand dollars, there's people watching this tonight that own businesses that were closed all three months also. And to be fair, if they came in and said, they don't pay rent, of course, but if they said, you know, you, you gave Harris a break for four hundred and some odd thousand dollars, I'd like the three months deduction on my real estate taxes to the city. I, I, I don't even know if we could do it, but that would sound fair to me if I owned a business. So that's kind of the problem we get into is how, you know, how do you make it equal? And I kind of like what Zach said, maybe the staff could come up with some kind of help for you because, you know, I, I know it was rough, but it, it was rough for restaurants and theaters and so far I don't think they've asked for any tax deduction. But that's the problem I have is that, what, what do we tell these people if we pass this? Thank you.
So if you were to, if the council would like, I'll call on, I think Councilmember maybe Saper and Toll next, if I have the right, but just a quick comment, if you all would like us to work with Harris to develop some kind of a way that they continue to pay the full amount they owe, but that it's, it's spread out over a period of years, we can go back and work on that and then come back to you. Councilmember Saper and then Councilmember Toll.
I, I, I agree with Jesse that I understand asking for it and it's a reasonable ask, but it's not reasonable for us to do it. And I, from their balance sheet, they don't seem to be in need of it. They're simply putting it forwards because it's a possibility. And of course, Rich, Rich's point is right on. We can't do it for them if we don't do it for everyone else and the city cannot do that. So I would be voting against it.
Councilmember Toll.
I like the idea that Zach had brought up of giving some extra cushion because we're still in the middle of this. If we, if we gave them two or three years or four years or whatever to get it paid back, I know that Jesse and other people have said all the wonderful things that Harris has done. And in addition to that, they've given Briar Cliff Elementary a grant almost every year. And in case you're playing Councilmember trivia, I had my wedding reception there. But I think, I think spreading it out is a reasonable ask, so we'll be getting the money just over time. So Eric, if you guys could draw that up, that would be great.
Councilmember DeLong.
I'm guessing this is already covered, I just missed it. This is paid right now as one sum a year, correct?
Yes.
And when is that paid?
I think it's usually in April, if I'm not mistaken.
Just gonna say March or April, yeah.
Thank you, and one follow-up here, is there any expenses associated with this for the city, with this property? Or is everything like maintenance-wise, mowing and everything covered by Harris?
Oh, yeah, Harris completely maintains the property.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions for Ms. Sola? Or Ms. Sola, did you have anything else for the council before they have discussion? Mayor Stilo, do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I like Zach's idea. I think that we could work out something and they, they could pay it back when they get ready.
Ms. Sola, did you have anything else before council maybe make some kind of a motion and vote?
I know, I mean, I, I just appreciate the willingness to, to listen. I would just, and I understand, you know, the comments around, you know, what would you do, you know, for other businesses and, or for, you know, the property tax? And I would just ask, are they, is every business exactly under the same kind of guidelines that we are? Just as you make that consideration. If there are other businesses that pay at least to the city, then I think that that's a fair kind of thing to, to discuss and talk about. And I don't know the answer to that because I am not privy to, you know, what everybody is paying towards the city. So I just appreciate, you know, the consideration and anything that you can do to help, so thank you.
Councilmember Clevenger.
If there is no further discussion, how about, I phrase the motion, make a motion to that we are not able or to able to deny the request for the abatement, but work out a payment plan over, I guess staff can come to that, to us with that, two, three years. I'd say three years max, maybe, maybe four years, I don't know, but come to us with that for repayment plan. I don't know if that's.
So table the issue for now?
Yeah, it might be better if staff just goes back and discusses and comes up with some sort of alternative plan.
Okay, yeah.
I, I do think if, if that's council consensus, then we can, we can work on that and come back to you and you don't, yeah. Uh, Councilmember.
Yeah, I think I'm curious how that, I mean, I have an idea of how that affects our budget immediately for us to like look at the payback period. What goes through my mind too is if they have like, everything goes back to normal somehow. We have, they have a big year, because I know it's kind of like, here's the payment is the minimum. Or if they do really, really well, then we get this portion that maybe we subtracted out of this larger portion that might be paid to us so that we're still kind of in the ballpark of our, of our budget. So that's just something to consider. I, I definitely like the idea of like a slower payback, but I'm just wondering, I have to wrap my mind around how that affects the immediate things that, because I know when we were working through the budget, everything was relying. the immediate things that, because I know when we were working through the budget, everything was relying on this gaming fund. So that's it.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, I think I have to wrap my head around it a little bit as well. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, unless I'm misunderstanding, this wouldn't impact 2021 budget at all because we budgeted for $2 million in rent. In any case, we would be getting more than that. So it shouldn't impact the budget negatively at all if we stretch it out. Or if we deny it, or if we allow it. So, you know, I, I would put it back to staff will consider it a future meeting.
So should I amend my motion and just motion to table this?
Let's just drop the motion.
Drop it completely. Forget it ever happened.
I, I think, I think staff has the direction it needs. We don't necessarily need, need a vote or anything. But is there anything else on this item before we move on? All right. Well, Julie, I will be in touch with you sometime after you get back from vacation. We can begin discussions about how this might work.
Okay, great. Thank you to each of you.
Number 14, CARES Fund Possibilities.
Thank you. So as memo in your packet indicates, as, as this writing, the city has approximately $191,000 left of its CARES Fund allocation. We were originally allocated approximately $418,000. We've spent a bit of that down on small business grants, emergency assistance to individuals and families. And then expenses to help get us through for remote work support, PPE, disinfecting supplies, social distancing supplies, et cetera. Leaving us that balance of about $191,000. We would recommend reserving about $5,000 a month for the months of October, November and December. And as a reminder, we have to spend down all of our allocation by December 30th. Any portion of it that we still have remaining, we are to return to the federal government. We, so we would recommend reserving $15,000 for some of those things that we've been spending, been spending money on. That would leave you about $176,000. So tonight, we're looking for any guidance you might have as to how you might like to spend the rest of that money before the end of the calendar year. Possibilities we've, you know, suggested to you, Northland Assistance Center has indicated that they have exhausted their second round of funding. And that they could use a third if you are of a mind to, to do that. Also, you had directed us to put on this agenda the possibility of another round of small business grants through the Clay County Economic Development Council. So we do have memorandums of understanding as your next two agenda items in, in case you were interested in doing either of those. In addition, we did do some assessing of building improvements, not through all of the different city buildings that we have around the city that we might use to try to minimize the possibility of contagion. And we've outlined our estimated cost for that. And then lastly, did spend a fair amount of time in the memo noting that we have received recent guidance from the Department of the Treasury indicating that we now do have the ability, if the council were of a mind, to reimburse ourselves for payroll expenses for public safety personnel. Up until now, it had always been really everyone's understanding that we could not spend those money on funds that had already been budgeted. But the new guidance makes it pretty clear that, that that is now an eligible expense. And so I felt that you should, you should know that. And so with that, we leave it to you to provide us any guidance. Councilmember DeLong?
I'll go ahead and fire away here. So I want to make sure, shorter order of this one, this meeting. I do believe we should give another $15,000 to the Northland Assistance Center. They've used up all the funds from my understanding. Are very close to it within the last few dollars. And, and I think it's important that we take care of our residents and make that available for rent assistance and other bill assistance. And then the second thing I, I would definitely like to ask consideration of tonight is the small business grants. I mean, I, I believe it's vitally important that we help protect our small businesses. I mean, these are the ones that they, they shut down and we've asked, they're still restricted. They're, they're still struggling. Heard a lot of good feedback from the first round of COVID assistance. And I definitely think another round would help as they prepare for the winter and still adjust to the new normal for a lot of the small businesses in town. And that, that's all I have for the moment.
Councilmember Smith and then councilmember Clevenger.
So the knowledge that we can use this to repay city expenses is a definite curve ball in the consideration. This was something that I was hopeful for and sort of why, part of the reason why we held back on just blanket approving the business grant program last time when we discussed it. So it does become essentially using tax dollars to subsidize whatever we're going to do. Because we could replace operational money with it. With that said, I do favor setting the 15,000 Northland Assistance. I think they're doing great work. That leaves us, after the 15,000 that Eric mentioned for PPE, that leaves us about $161,000 if my math is right. How do we want to allocate that? Do we want to go 161 into business grants? Do we want to keep some of it back to offset the expenses? Do we have numbers in mind for that? And is this going to be the same exact way? I, I need to look back at this with the EDC taking a cut to process applications, that sort of thing.
Yes, both of the memorandums of understanding, which are on your agenda for consideration after this are virtually the exact same agreements as you have passed before, including an administrative fee for, for both agencies.
Okay, so last time when we, when the EDC processed, which I appreciate their effort, we had short of the full amount of application. So everyone got what they asked for. Not a whole lot of processing needed, but we did end up paying $7,500 out to the EDC. That's a little bit of a struggle for me when we gave away everything that was asked for. The second thing, and I don't know how to phrase this without sounding discriminatory toward businesses, but we need to make sure that this is going to businesses that really truly need it. Some of the businesses that ended up in the pool last time are not the kind that were directly impacted by the restrictions we put in place. They've actually seen business expand in some of the industries during COVID. So having a really scrutinizing eye and not, and if we approve $150,000, that would leave us 11 extra that we could do what we need to do with. But doesn't mean we have to give away all 150,000 of it. And we really should scrutinize these applications. So if we're going to be paying a fee to the EDC, I'd like to see some real processing of the applications, some real, you know, analysis of, of how these businesses are being impacted. If it's a business that got one last time and really could use the money again, I think they should get it. If it's one that didn't apply last time, I think they should get it as well. It's, it's really going to be on the EDC to give us some good guidance on that and for us to make the final decision. That's my thought.
Perhaps we can have some discussion of that when we get to the next item, item 15, second round of small business grants. If in fact, that's the way the council wants to go with another round of those. Councilmember DeLong and then councilmember Clevenger?
Well, I, I was actually going to go deeper into the business council grant, but if, but if, if he's, if what he's considering is contingent upon knowing some of these answers, then it might.
I guess I just was wanting to, yeah, well, whenever you're ready to move on to item 15, we can. I just wanted to make sure that you had decided that you wanted to go that direction.
Yeah, that's my question for councilmember Smith. If any, if answers to any of these questions now would be contingent on him saying yes or no to moving on to a small business discussion.
No, I support it. I just want.
Okay, well then, okay, then I'll hold.
But councilmember Clevenger?
Yeah, this may be for the next item as well. I just wanted to say I'm in support of the business grants because they have, only had one round of funding. I've heard from several business owners that could use the, the money for like winterizing their patios, you know, getting heaters, things of that nature. So I think that's important to take care of them. We have the money for the residents. I think it's important to do that. And again, businesses should maybe, I think the ones that didn't get a grant before should kind of take precedence over the ones that already have received a grant. I know a lot of these grants are going toward mainly retail and restaurant. Those are, you know, not to exclude anybody else, but those are our main focus as far as businesses that have been hit hardest on the COVID.
Councilmember DeLong?
Okay, so then to address additional funds, let's say this comes in at 140 again and there's, there's additional funds. I really think it'd be a management decision up to that point, really what to do with the rest, whether you think that's better used to make some improvements at City Hall. Whether you think that's better used as revenue replacement. I mean, I, I would feel comfortable just kind of leaving that up to you on how to decide what to do with that, that small, essentially kind of residual amount remaining.
Well, I appreciate that, sir. I'd probably come to council for at least a, an out of approval at that point. But the, if there were any funds remaining, we could always use them for, as you say, revenue replacement. In other words, you know, paying for payroll expenses for public safety. That's, that, and then that money is always available for any purpose. So that would probably be a way to go if we have any unused funds at the end of the year.
So then one more on that. You wanted to withhold or 5,000 a month, total 15,000. But that, that's just being held just in case, right? So some of that may be left over in the end. You may not be using all that.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so then you could roll that over into some of these other projects. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Farr.
I agree with everything. I think the Northland Assistance Center, if we're going to spend this money down, I think we need to give them $30,000 because they got three more months left out of the year. $15,000, I've already spent it in 30 days. Because they do a lot of good with this.
Well, that would be then the item after the next item on the agenda. Yes, sir. Any, any, councilmember Tull and then councilmember Smith?
Something that wasn't on your list for the city, and I know you said we'll talk about this later when the money comes up, but something to think about is the UV lights that they're putting in HVAC systems. So I know a lot of city employees are working from home, but there are city employees that have to be in person. And unlike temperature check, which kind of gives you a false sense of security, UV lights have been shown to at least decrease the spread of the aerosol. So I checked with Screenland because I know they had put the UV lights in their HVAC system. They were able to install them themselves, but they cost $800. So if you're looking at the library and City Hall and our, our buildings, that might be something that could work for multiple illnesses.
Thank you, ma'am. We will, we will take a look at that. By councilmember Smith?
What it sounds like, and I know that these are kind of in an order, but we need to figure out amounts. So as Tom mentioned, I think 30,000 sounds good for Northland Assistance Center to get them through the next three or so months to the end of the year. And then that would hinge the amount that we put on the business grants because we wouldn't have as much left in the coffers. So we would have to drop that number down just a little bit. So if we did 30 for Northland Assistance, that would give us 146 back for businesses with before we exhausted the funds. Do we want to put specifics on those?
Do you mean like $5,000 max like the way you did the last time? Is that what you mean?
Well, I, I mean a capped amount because right now it's written as 150,000 plus the fee to the EDC. If we, if we put 30 toward Northland Assistance Center, we don't have that much leftover.
Yeah, actually, we left it blank for you. So you can put any, in, in the item on the agenda. But no, here, I, I will share one piece of feedback with you. Another community in Clay County, I believe, did tell us that when they did a second round of small business grants, they actually had fewer applications than they did the first time. I'm not sure what that means, but that was, that was something they shared with us. Councilmember DeLong?
I'm sorry, did you say total numbers there, Jesse, on what those amounts would look like?
That would be 30 and 146, holding back at 15 that Eric mentioned.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm definitely good with 30. I thought the same thing when I first started discussing this is 15. Northland Assistance Center uses 15 in one month. And like you said, we got a couple of months left to still use these funds. So let's go ahead and allocate those. Or I'm sorry, it's councilmember Farce, thank you.
So I think councilmember Tull and then councilmember Clevenger?
We're not the only city or community that's giving CARES funds to Northland Assistance, are we?
No, no, Smithville has done it. Gladstone at our suggestion is doing it. I think, I think there's some other communities that are, that may also be doing it. So no, we are not the only one. But several have used Northland Assistance Center because they're, you know, a kind of agency that does exactly that kind of work.
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of keeping 150,000 for small businesses. If we're getting down to dollar amount, if that's a different discussion for another item, that's fine. I just didn't know when we were making that decision. Is that for this discussion?
Well, the next item on your agenda is a second round of small business grants. And we have left the amount blank in the memorandum of understanding for you to fill in. So this probably would be as good a time as any if you know how you'd like to divvy up the remaining funds to, to say that. And then we can move on to the next item and just plug a number into the, into the blank, if that makes sense.
I know Rita was on earlier. Is she still on?
Ms. Pierce, are, are you on? Do you have a question for Ms. Pierce? Councilmember Tull?
Yeah, if she was on, I was just going to get her opinion on how, I know there'll be, whatever CARES Act funds they're, they get, they're going to need to push out before the first of the year and whether or not she'd be able to push out $30,000 in addition to what she's already received, if she's on to answer.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, I can push out 30,000 more dollars. In regard to Ms. Tull's question, yes, we do have CARES funds. They're coming from, here's the three entities we have in place and then one on Gladstone City Council, which I'm sure will be approved. Smithville has given us $25,000 for their residents only. Kent City, Missouri, Clay County has so far allocated $40,000. We spent 30 of that and they have 10,000 and maybe more on down the line. North Kent City, thank you, have given us $30,000. We have spent that. And as I indicated at the last council meeting, that once the word got out that we would be able to spend those funds a whole lot quicker because we are, as the two people in my organization, who, there's only two employees, we have continued to put the word out to spend these monies. Because I think, you know, if you have the monies, we need to spend them to whatever residents that we're allowed to give them to. Gladstone, when I spoke to their assistant city manager tonight, they're going to give us three allocations, much like North Kent City, and $15,000 each with a 5% administrative fee, which is extremely low. Yes, we can spend that money. I guarantee you, we can spend that money. I've already demonstrated we can spend $15,000 in a month. So I, but I want to preface this because I spoke to councilmember DeLong by phone and indicated, I do not want this to come at the expense of small businesses because I live in North Kent City, I work in North Kent City, and I'm completely invested in North Kent City. So I want to take money from small businesses. I'm just telling you, if your question is, Ms. Tull, that we can spend $30,000 in the next couple of months, and I really truly expect the government to extend that, we can. So to answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
So I, I think I had councilmember Clevenger and then councilmember Smith?
Okay, a couple of things. Certainly, I support both of these programs. I do want to, I agree with councilmember Tull. I want to at least have 150 available, 150,000 for business grants. If we don't use all of it, then maybe we can redirect some of it back more to Northland Assistance. You know, 20, 25,000. I think if we do the 150,000 based off Jesse's math, would that drop Northland Assistance down to 25,000 roughly?
One thing I do, one thing I don't want you to forget is that administrative fees
Yes.
for 5% are part of this. So I, I was going to suggest some math to you. For your consideration, councilmembers, that being $30,000 for Northland Assistance Center plus a $1,500 administrative fee, I guess that up to 31,500 of expense. $135,000 of small business grants plus a 5% fee of 6,750, which gets the small business grant expense up to 141,750. That was my suggestion to you, just to have some reference.
I'm not comfortable with that. I, I'd like at least 145 to 150,000 that's available to go to the businesses. I think the 135 is too low.
It will leave less than, of course, for Northland Assistance Center.
I understand that. I understand that, but with, businesses have only had one round and Northland Assistance has had two, which both of them.
I wasn't, wasn't trying to argue the point, just wanted to make it.
Sure, no, no.
Councilmember Smith and then Councilmember DeLong.
All right, here's where I'm at on the math. Um, a hundred and fifty thousand for the small business grants and with a caveat, up, up to one hundred and fifty thousand. If we don't decide to give out that much, or if we don't have enough applicants, that money goes back in and either replaces, uh, the revenue or goes to Northland Assistance. So a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, with a seventy-five hundred admin fee at max, that would leave sixteen thousand five hundred for Northland Assistance, um, inclusive of the admin fee. Um, and then if we have extra overages, we could reallocate at a future meeting before the end of the year.
All right, uh, any other input otherwise?
May I speak to this, Eric?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my initial conversation with, uh, Councilmember DeLong was another fifteen thousand dollar grant, not a thirty thousand dollar grant, because we already have those MOUs that are already clearly indicated and it's really easy to do. I, I am not asking for more than that. Um, I'm not asking for anything. I was really surprised to see we would even be on the agenda again, given the list agenda. So I don't want to take away from small business. I cannot emphasize this enough. Um, I'm very happy with another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think it's easily spent. And if there are monies left, then it's up to the council to decide whether it goes to small business or to our organization or to wherever it goes. It would make it much simpler. And I appreciate you, Tom, and others who are, uh, support it thirty thousand dollars. And I know this is agenda item number sixteen. But I'm really, really happy with the fifteen thousand. It's easier for the city to administer. And then if I, if we have monies left, then we can let staff come back to you and ask for more monies. That's all I have to say. And I pretty much said all I need to say on agenda item sixteen. So, thank you.
Uh, any other general discussion before we move to item fifteen, uh, second round of small business grants? All right. Uh, Madam Kirk, you want to go ahead and announce, uh, item fifteen?
Funding, second round of small business grants, resolution number twenty dash zero six eight.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Councilmember Smith?
Uh, yeah, I want to first clarify, um, as we're doing these approvals, I want to make, make it sure that we're getting the scorecards in and that the council's going to make the final approvals on these, not, it's not going to be if we get only a hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of application that everybody gets it. Um, that it will come to us for an up-down or a, a change of the recommendation. Um, but I do, I have a motion, but I, I saw Bryant's hand if he wanted to. Okay. Yeah, that we approve funding for the small business grant in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand plus a five percent, uh, admin fee for the Economic Development Council.
Been moved and seconded that, uh, the second round of small business grants administered.
Yeah, I, kind of what we were talking about earlier. I do think there kind of needs to be a higher factor on COVID impact score. And I do feel like the last ones kind of came back as like an all or nothing. All hit five thousand. I mean, one even asked for a little less and we gained five thousand. So, you know, I, I'd rather definitely try to match this with the need a little bit better. You know, if they're trying to spend six, seven hundred dollars for some outdoor patio equipment for the winter to help winterize, you know what? Let's get him six, seven hundred dollars, whatever, instead of five thousand. And then maybe we even might have some leftover money for some of the other stuff. But that, that's all I really have to say on the, the process.
Yeah, when we, you know, and we, the way we did this last time for the, was that, uh, we, uh, had a special meeting, uh, because that was how they, it just kind of worked. You wanted to get those out and, uh, it was, you know, the council could have done anything it wanted to at that time, and that'll be your prerogative again. So again, it's been moved. Uh, Councilmember Smith.
All right, one, one point of clarification. It would be good, as Bryant pointed out, to have, and I think it was on the last one, where they put an amount that they're asking for up to five thousand, and we actually take it at face value for what, very much emphasizing that they write that amount and be honest with us about it, not just write five thousand because that's what we're giving away. But yeah, that's all, uh, moved and seconded.
All right, so the motion is, uh, for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, in a small business grants, uh, with a, a five percent, uh, fee of a hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That's as a maximum, uh, administered to Clay County EDC. Uh, so what's before you is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding. Uh, and, uh, is the motion to adopt that resolution at that amount? Councilmember Smith?
My math off, you said one sixty-two five. I think it's.
Excuse me, one fifty-seven five, I apologize. You're right. Thank you. Sorry, jotting down figures too quick. So a hundred fifty thousand plus seventy-five hundred dollar, uh, five percent fee in the memorandum of understanding. Is that, uh, resolution number twenty dash oh six eight is before you? So any further discussion?
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Number sixteen, CARES Act Funding, Third Round of Emergency Assistance to Individuals and Families. Resolution number twenty dash oh six nine.
Councilmember Smith?
Move that we approve, uh, funding in the amount of fifteen thousand plus a five percent administrative fee to Northland Assistance Center.
Okay.
Uh, is there any further discussion?
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Item seventeen, Wayfinding Sign Text, Wayfinding Signage, sign number four.
Thank you. I'll call in the Community Development Director, Sarah Copeland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, at your September first meeting, you approved a contract with Star Signs for the fabrication and installation of four new pole-mounted wayfinding signs and reviewed the text copy for each sign. Uh, City Council approved of signs A, B, and C, uh, with a revision, but had concerns about the signed copy for sign D and asked staff to provide further options. So those are contained in the memo that was presented to you this evening. There were two options proposed by staff. One is to, um, revise the sign copy for sign D, which would be on sixth, or I'm sorry, on Swift, near Sixteenth Avenue, to substitute Interstate instead of One North. The other option would be to substitute a different sign located on Armor Road, uh, north of Armor between Macon and Ozark, pointing towards downtown Parks and High School. This would kind of line up with the other signs, which are also located on Armor Road. Uh, the sign company has asked for a decision about the copy for this fourth sign because they would like to manufacture all of the sign panels at the same time. Um, so we would appreciate your direction on this tonight.
Councilmember Toll and then Councilmember Smith.
Um, I think maybe, I wanted to make sure I was clear about what I had said last time when we talked about this. I didn't mean, and, and it might not have been me, it might have been somebody else, to replace One North with Highway. I mean, I think One North is going to be great once you get the signage out at One North. So I would leave that, but maybe do all the signs on Armor for now until you get One North. And I've been practicing when I talk about the area to say One North, so it's like, or of my lingo. Um, I think it would be great to have One North on there when people know what One North is.
So you would prefer the second option to substitute sign E?
Yes, I wouldn't, or if you end up doing the other sign, I wouldn't replace it with Highway. I just didn't think anyone would know what One North is yet. But once you get the signage up there, it definitely makes sense to point people to that direction so they can find the things in One North.
Councilmember Smith?
I, I agree with that. Uh, I would certainly go with sign E, especially because I was having trouble with it initially. And then if I, if you think about it in the system, so if you're coming down, uh, Westbound Armor and it's pointing, yes, downtown is straight ahead of you, very good. The Parks and High School signs I had a little question about because it's not, they're not directly ahead, but then it does point to sign, was it B, that will then direct them to the next turn that will get them to the high school and parks. I think that's a very useful wayfinding sign. So, uh, sign E would be my choice on that one.
Actually, sign E would point you towards sign C. Sign B is facing eastbound traffic.
Okay, so could we, on sign C, add an arrow that points Parks, uh, at the very bottom there?
We could. Um, one of the reasons that sign C does not contain an arrow to Parks is that there is one park that would be kind of in front of you at that point, um, Dag Park and other parks that are a right turn.
Sure, and I mean, doesn't have to be mutually exclusive, I guess. Is there a way to put an, an arrow ahead and to the side? Because.
No, there's not. But we could put Parks with a right arrow if you would like that on sign C.
Honestly, I would prefer that because by the time you get to sign C, you can see Dag Park, um, and then the rest of the parks would be to your, uh, north.
So, so far, we're hearing input to add a, uh, on sign C, add Parks and a right arrow and, uh, and go with sign E. Uh, is there any further, uh, discussion or? Can we have a, can we have a motion to that effect? If, if you're, if you don't have any further discussion?
I, I'll throw a motion out there, uh, move to approve the copy for sign E, copy and placement for sign E. In addition, adding Parks with a right turn arrow to the bottom of sign C.
A second?
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Item eighteen, Establishment of an Equity and Inclusion Committee, Bill number seventy-five forty-seven, ordinance number nine, three forty.
Uh, thank you. Uh, at its work sessions of August eighteenth and September first, the City Council established, discussed the establishment of a city equity and inclusion committee. And so the city councilor has drafted an ordinance, uh, hopefully in accordance with the, uh, guidance that you had provided to us, and it is before you now for your consideration. Uh, Councilmember Clevenger and then Councilmember DeLong.
Just a couple of quick questions. First and foremost, I want to say I fully support this committee being brought, uh, to get forward. Um, as far as if it is, uh, approved tonight in the ordinance, um, nominations, when do you want nominations by? I assume we're going to send them to the mayor or to the city clerk to have put on the council agenda for approval? And are we going to be requiring, or do we want them to fill out any kind of form, just like the other boards and committees? Just a couple of housekeeping items wanted to clear up.
I, I guess we assume that you would want to handle it the same way as you're handling other board and committee, uh, uh, applications. Uh, and yes, uh, you, each of you, according to the ordinance, uh, would supply one nominee to the mayor for his consideration and then based upon him telling us to, we'd put it on the agenda for your approval. Uh, so, Councilmember DeLong and then Councilmember Saper?
Councilmember Saper, and go ahead.
Councilmember Saper?
Yeah, I'd like to refer to, uh, section two point five zero point one three zero membership. Uh, initially, it was the interest that this be a group created by the city council. And so I would like to change some of that wording in this way. The committee shall consist of nine members. Each council member shall appoint one qualified resident for such council members, from such council members' ward. The mayor shall, uh, select one additional qualified city resident to serve on the committee. And the, and the council shall confirm all committee members and the rest as written. Uh, we've had other city committees that are actually appointed by the city council. And, uh, I've had a lot of discussion with other people in the city, residents, who really want to keep that grassroots kind of connection.
Uh, is there any discussion about, uh, Councilmember Saper's proposed change? Uh, Councilmember DeLong?
Uh, I would agree with that. I feel, and maybe I didn't convey this message very well before, but I believe that was the intent of what we were going for before. So, yeah, I would agree with what he is suggesting.
Any other discussion on the, on that proposed change? Uh, Councilmember DeLong?
Okay, now on to the other, uh, council liaison wasn't included in this. Would that, is that just kind of assumed through our normal kind of board process that there would be a council liaison?
I believe so, but I'll ask the city councilor, Tom Barzey, to, to comment because we, we did talk about that. Tom, do you have any comment?
What, what was the question? I'm sorry.
The question was that there, uh, a, a city council member liaison was not mentioned in the, uh, body of the ordinance. And he was asking if that was purposeful or what?
It was purposeful. Uh, we had every other board and every other commission of the city, you will find it no place, uh, at all that, uh, it's required and it's simply an appointment, uh, that is typically made, uh, you know, for these others by the mayor with the approval of the council. So, in talking, in talking at, you know, among staff level, it didn't make a lot of sense to me to create something totally different than what we normally use.
Yeah, and I agree. I, I looked, I just wanted to clarify on that because I, I didn't see it on other ones either. I just wanted to make sure that that was uh, contemplated through all this. Um, and then my other one is the amendment that I forwarded you guys, uh, late last night to amend the name from Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee to the Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
And, uh, Mr. Dela, uh, Mr. Berlin, if I could address that directly, uh, the city clerk already has that uh, in her hands, not knowing what you would do. She actually has three separate ordinances, uh, all changed with the name. One is the way it came out to you, uh, another one, uh, is Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. And the third one, just so that I can hopefully cover them all, the third one is Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. So, uh, hopefully you'll pick one of the three.
My, my, my amendment would be just to change it to, from Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee to Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. So that would be the motion I would ask for council to consider.
Uh, and, and discussion on, on that suggestion. Uh, Councilmember Toll?
I agree. I vote option B, which is kind of how we had put it together. Um, and the only other thing I was going to say, I know this doesn't go into the ordinance itself, but the whereas page, the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, where it says, um, how to best move forward with ethnic community engagement. I think we can get rid of ethnic and just keep that as community engagement. And then diversity is kind of sprinkled into a lot of the other places. I would just omit that word. And thank you for all the time that people have put in to make this happen. I really appreciate it. And I think, uh, I think a lot of people are proud that the city's moving in this direction.
So if there's no objection, we will remove the word ethnic in the fifth whereas clause. And any other discussion on the ordinance?
And then, and then how do we want to take care? Procedurally, I guess, here.
So my suggestion would be a motion to amend, uh, section two fifty, two point five, oh point one three oh, uh, per, uh, Councilmember Sapers, uh, suggested amended wording. Uh, rename, uh, the committee, uh, the, uh, equity and inclusion advisory committee. Anywhere where it's otherwise currently stated in the draft ordinance that you have in front of you. And to, uh, remove the word ethnic in the, uh, fifth whereas clause.
All right, then I would move that motion to take councilmember Saper's amendment to the membership two point five one three zero, as well as amending the name to equity and inclusion advisory committee. As well as councilmember Toll's suggestion to remove the word ethnic. And that is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I moved it second, is there any further discussion?
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevinger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And ordinance amending title to administration and personnel of the code of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri. By creating a new chapter two point five of equity and inclusion advisory committee. And establishing an equity and inclusion advisory committee in the city of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I mean, that bill number seven five four seven be placed on second final reading and passes ordinance number nine three four four.
Second, second?
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevinger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And ordinance amending title to administration and personnel of the code of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri. Be, by creating a new chapter two point five O equity and inclusion advisory committee. And establishing an equity and inclusion advisory committee in, in the city of North Kansas City, Missouri. Number nineteen, rescinding traffic, rescinding change to traffic pattern on Atlantic Street. Resolution number twenty dash zero six six.
Thank you. Uh, on September first, uh, the city council approved a resolution changing the traffic pattern on Atlantic Street. We had to presented this to you, this, uh, recommendation to you to address an issue with tractor trailers parking and staging in both directions, waiting their turn to be assigned to dock at one of the local businesses in the area there. Uh, and prior to putting the matter before you, uh, the police department contacted all of the businesses in the area uh, to discuss the proposed traffic pattern change and reported that none of the businesses that were contacted, indicated that this change would adversely affect them. But subsequent to the council taking action on that resolution, we did hear from the CEO of XL2, who, who we had, we had spoken with XL, uh, XL2 before putting it before you. But they indicated that in fact, their company would be adversely affected by the change, uh, that was approved by the council. And if we had understood that, uh, we would not have put it before you. It's not our intention to adversely affect any business in the area. We were only trying to try to, to help all the businesses in the area. So, uh, the city council did approve that change, but it had not been implemented when we, uh, heard, uh, from XL2. So, uh, based upon staff's current understanding of, of XL2's, uh, position, staff would now recommend that the, or resolution that was adopted on September first be repealed. Uh, and we simply will not implement what you had, uh, put in place earlier. And we will continue to look for means of, to, to alleviate the problems that are occurring with truck parking on Atlantic Street. So we do have a resolution, repealing resolution number two zero dash zero five eight, uh, before you for your consideration. Councilmember Clevinger?
Um, couple of things. First of all, um, XL2, I believe has done quite a bit of expansion in North Kansas City, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, uh, as far as the, if it was two-way traffic on the, when the trucks were stationed on both sides of the street, that was restricting the two-way traffic flow. So staff is going to work, like you said, uh, maybe it's some other options to alleviate that. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, we are working with the business in, it's CNC produce, don't have to be coy. They're, they're having, they get a lot of, of truck traffic. We're, we're working with them, trying to work with other businesses. I mean, we could take a more heavy-handed enforcement approach if we had to, but we, we would prefer to try to work with the businesses in the area. We'll continue to do that, uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll do what's necessary because there is an issue out there and we, we do recognize that.
Thank you.
Uh, so any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevinger?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Number twenty, task order number five for Armor Road Complete Street Project Adjustments.
Uh, thank you, I'll call on the community development director, Sarah Copeland.
During the September twenty-second virtual town hall, city council will direct the staff to prepare options for adjustments to the Armor Road Complete Street project in response to community inputs. This task order authorizes WSP, the project engineer, to prepare options for your consideration for this, you know, list of adjustments. Uh, replacing the delineators along the corridor, uh, new landscaping for the existing bump out islands, pavement markings to make the bike lanes more visible. Evaluating the turning radii at driveways and at the entrance to the post office drop boxes. Also evaluating the turning radii at street intersections, including the existing radii at Iron Street. The configuration of the western end of the bike lane with a possible right turn lane at Fayette. And signal operation improvements between Iron and Howell to reduce stacking. WSP will develop options for each of these adjustments. Present benefits and drawbacks for each option and provide cost estimates for the council's consideration in December. Uh, this task order will be paid from the existing funds that were budgeted in this year's budget for Armor Road Complete Street Phase Two. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Clevinger?
A couple of things. First of all, thank you for bringing this forward. When you're talking about street markings, are you talking about at the intersections, painting them a certain color possibly?
Well, the discussion that we had on the twenty-second, we talked about both just, um, painting conflict areas, which would be intersections and driveways. That was something that we bid, uh, when we, as an ad alternate, when we originally did the first phase of construction. My recollection is that councilmember Smith asked us to also evaluate painting the entire bike lane. Um, so we wanted to, in December, our thought was that we would provide you with both alternatives, um, and cost estimates, as well as, you know, if there are any other ideas for improving, uh, the visibility of the lane. But those would probably be the main two options on that one.
Okay, and one other, uh, uh, thing that I might add, and I was going to do it at council member comments, but this is the perfect place for it. Uh, in front of the old QuickTrip where we got the turn lane at Knox. And if we end up doing something at, uh, Fayette where it, you know, ends there. With, we've created that turn lane with that second lane, uh, we've opened that back up. But there is really no protection for cyclists in that area where there was before. Um, I've heard from a couple cyclists and I've, when I've been riding on the road a couple of times. One time a car followed us, um, in the bike lane, um, down to where they were going to turn. So I don't know if there's something, or even temporarily, even I know they're ugly delineators. Putting something there that's going to, you know, keep people out of the bike lane. And when they're in that lane to turn there at Knox. Um, so that's just something I'd like to add. I don't know, uh, if you can do that or what you think about that, Sarah.
I, I will ask them to incorporate that in with replacing the delineators.
Thank you.
And see if we can do that as, as part of that adjustment.
Any, uh, councilmember Toll?
Um, I'm not sure if everybody else has been getting this, but I've been contacted several times by people saying that they are in favor of painting those bike lanes green and they would like to have a community painting event and everybody chip in to get it done and make it costless. My assumption is there's probably some rules on that, but I just thought I would let the city know. I've had several people contact me and say, let's do it, let's do a community paint job. So there's a lot of interest there.
You, that'll be before you in December perhaps. Uh, councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just to comment on the safety of the bikes, you're never going to have it until the bike lanes are off the street.
Uh, any other questions or discussion on task order number five for the Armor Road Complete Street Project Adjustments?
Move to approve.
Second?
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevinger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
I'm going to vote no because it's, uh, not consistent with the, what the people said when on the survey. I mean, you said he took that in consideration. I don't think so. I don't think he did. No.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
No ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sixty-two motion carries. Number twenty-one, discussion of extending parklet licenses date.
Uh, thank you. Uh, on September first, uh, council adopted an ordinance that authorized parklet licenses through November second. In view of recent interest in parklet licenses that staff has received, we're suggesting that the final date for parket licenses be extended to December first. So if you indicated tonight that you agreed, we'd place an ordinance on your next council agenda accordingly. Uh, I'm seeing thumbs up. Is there any other discussion? Nods? No objections? Councilmember Stewart?
No, I don't, Jack, I think it's a, it's a good thing. However, if they go into December and they want heat, you might check with the fire department. You know, liquid fuel scares me in any public gathering. Uh, so there might be a problem there where they have to be electric. I don't know. But I know liquid fuel and crowds is dangerous, either, even outside.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll speak to Chief Harkis about that. Uh, councilmember Farr?
What happens if it snows?
I, I don't know, sir. Um, uh, are we going to plow the street? We're going to plow around this thing or? Or what? I'm. Are we just not going to plow streets or? Uh, I, I imagine we would have to find a way around the, the parklets if they're out and it snows before then. If, if you do extend the date to December first. So, uh, I think based upon what I'm hearing, and I'd say we will actually have a formal ordinance before you, uh, in your next agenda for your consideration. But, uh, didn't want to put that before you without at least seeing an indication that you were interested in doing that. So if there's nothing further, I think we could probably move on to item number twenty-two.
Question of city position on trick or treating this Halloween.
Thank you. So, uh, it, just real quick, Mr. Councilmember DeLong, and then I'll, I'll call. Uh, so we have received now a couple of inquiries from people, uh, about just, is, does the city have a position on trick or treating? And, uh, we are not as staff recommending that you do and make it, do any kind of prohibition or anything like that. Uh, but because we, we are getting inquiries from people asking if there is a city position, we thought if we should put it to you for your, uh, discussion. Our thought might be that based upon whatever guidance you give us tonight, that we might just use city media to sort of provide some kind of guidance or suggestions to people along the lines of what we presented in the packet, which we tried to grab something, it's a, it was actually a blog post from North Kansas City Hospital. It wasn't clear from the, uh, attachment, but that's where it comes from. So there's lots of stuff out there like that and, and that, that would be our thought. But we did want to see if the city council wants to take any kind of position with regard to trick or treating. Is there any discussion? Councilmember DeLong?
I would say we take no official position and I agree with you. There's going to be plenty of social media out here that have said CDC recommendations on it. Have the city share that on our social media, reach out to people and let, let, uh, let everyone know that. But other than that, I don't believe we should take an official position for that. Thank you.
Councilmember, councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I actually did have, um, a community member approach me, um, who plans on just putting together like a Halloween parade. And she was like, I, do I have to get like permission from the city just to like, allow the kids in the neighborhood just to kind of get outside with their costumes, spread out and literally walk up the street and back down in a parade? And then they're done. Um, and yeah, I guess tonight's vote would, I guess, affect whether they can do that. If we're going to lay like an ordinance or just leave it up to them.
Yeah, we, we don't even, if you had a, a, a hard position you wanted to take, you could vote. Otherwise, if you just sort of gave us consensus, I think that would be fine with us. Uh, councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I don't think we should give a consensus to allow a parade down the street after dark. I mean, you're inviting somebody to get run over. I mean, it was a good idea, whoever thought of it in a way, but it's kind of dangerous too.
It's not going to be after dark. These are like little three and four-year-old children. It's, it's, yeah, it's going to be probably at four o'clock or three thirty.
Still in the street that, you know, that's why we have sidewalks.
I don't know if it's in the street. That might have been my assumption. We do have a sidewalk. I don't know the quality of our sidewalk, but yeah. I mean, I'm going to leave it to the discretion of the parents to like protect their children not to die.
Yeah, we just don't, I just don't think the city would give permission to walk in the streets.
No, that's, that, that is correct. We, hopefully the parade would be, uh, off the street.
I'll stay home, I, I'll stay home so I don't run over any of them.
Councilmember Toll?
Uh, I would assume it's sidewalks, but I've been in your neighborhood on the sidewalks and they are very tiny. So for the next parade, maybe you could get, get on the sidewalks, councilmember. I will let them know it's sidewalk only. That's it. So thank you, everyone. I'm going to let them be sure it's sidewalk only.
Any further discussion? All right, so in, if, in response, if someone asks us if the city has any position, we will say, no, we, we, we do not. But we may use our media to put out, uh, you know, suggestions such as what North Kansas City Hospital has here, uh, for people to consider. Thank you, that, that gives us what we need to be able to answer inquiries, uh, going forward. We can move on to item twenty-three.
Contract restoration and installation of groundwater monitoring wells, resolution number twenty dash oh six seven.
Uh, thank you, I'm calling the public works director, Pat Hover.
Thank you. In two thousand and eighteen, the city was notified by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources that it's necessary to take certain measures to restore seven groundwater, groundwater monitoring wells located in the city's twenty-two-year-old sludge landfill site. The notification stated the wells were degraded and must be renovated. The sludge landfill is located along the Missouri Red River just south of Harrah's. The scope of work for this project includes redevelopment of seven monitoring wells to adequately monitor the site. Install two new upgrading water monitoring wells. Perform a site characterization to establish groundwater gradients. And provide elevations at the top of each monitoring well to resolve a discrepancy in such elevation. In the two thousand and twenty-one WPC fund included three, thirty thousand dollars for this capital project. Four bids for this project were submitted and opened publicly on September ninth. The bids range from sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars to eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Following the review of the bids, the bid submitted by New Horizons LLC in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars was deemed to be the lowest and best bid. A resolution approving a contract with New Horizons in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars has been prepared for consideration of council's approval. Any questions?
Move to approve. Again.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevinger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Item twenty-four, Adoption of Salary Ranges for Calendar Year Two Thousand Twenty-One, Resolution Number Twenty dash zero seven one.
Thank you. The city's personnel policy provides that the city council shall approve the city's overall job classification system, salary ranges, and general compensation strategy and plan. On August twentieth, twenty nineteen, the city council approved recommendations coming out of a compensation study performed by Gallagher Benefit Services. And one of those recommendations is that in order to retain a competitive position in the marketplace and to maintain a current and workable compensation program, that the salary ranges be adjusted annually. Gallagher has recommended that salary ranges be, this year be increased between a half a percent and two percent for two thousand twenty-one. And staff is recommending that the salary ranges for non-union positions be increased by one point zero percent. And a resolution is before you accordingly. Are there any questions? Councilmember Toll?
This year might be unusual because I'm fairly new to the council, but when I was looking at the salary ranges, level twelve where the city councillor is at, we've contracted out with several different lawyers, several few different lawyers at this point. And I was wondering if we brought somebody in at the low end of that and did some of Tom's work, like writing the ordinances and that, that the small day-to-day stuff, if we would actually save money as opposed to contracting. I mean, I know some lawyers, like bond lawyers are very specific, but it was just, it was just a question I had. I feel like two or three times we've had to approve contracts with other lawyers. Am I way off base here?
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily, I, I understand the question and we can, we can have, we can look at that. I, I don't know that that's necessarily before you. It's, it'd be, and I, it's part of this resolution, but I mean, if you would like.
It's just when it popped up, it made me think, I wonder if we're spending more than a hundred and nine thousand contracting out with other lawyers. Would just be something to look at.
We definitely spend in addition to what the, the salary of the city councillor, we, we do indeed utilize outside legal counsel for, for various things. No question about that. Whether, you know, it would make sense to, you know, try to hire somebody else to do some of the more routine things as you're, you're suggesting would, would be a, a discussion we could have. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any further?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Item twenty-five, Disposal of Surplus Equipment, Resolution Number Twenty dash zero seven zero.
Thank you. Various departments within the, within the city have identified items that are no longer of use to the city for various reasons. The items recommended for disposal include things like office furniture, pickup trucks, police cars, musical equipment, bicycles, computers, and more. As noted in the resolution that's presented to the city council for approval, we do have to, the council does have to approve a, a resolution before we can dispose of items. So we do recommend approval of the resolution approving the list of items that's been recommended. Councilmember Clevenger?
I, I know at one time, you know, the city had those, we had talked about those Rs for Richard Park that we had there where the new sculpture is. Have they ever decided what they're gonna do with those, if they're gonna keep them or if they're gonna sell them as excess equipment? Or have we already done so? Do you know?
We haven't done so. We still have them.
Are we gonna use them?
We didn't put them up for auction. We don't have a purpose for them in all honesty, sir, but we didn't put them up for auction this time.
Okay, maybe something to think about in the future. I know one lady waiting with bated breath, maybe buy one of those, so.
I will make sure that we put it on the next auction list. We can always come to them for Rick Stewart Park.
There you go. Put a new park somewhere else with Rick Stewart, yeah.
Actually, those Rs were not for Richard Park. That's where they were put. They was for the old Runway Building across the street. We tried to burn it down several times when I was on the fire department, but it didn't work.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clip?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, Approving Accounts Due and Payable by the City Through October Second, Two Thousand Twenty, Bill Number Seventy-five fifty-one, Ordinance Number Ninety-three forty-eight.
First reading.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing payment for certain accounts due and payable by the city through October second, two thousand twenty.
I move that bill number seventy-five fifty-one be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number ninety-three forty-eight.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing payment for certain accounts due and payable by the city through October second, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. The next item is staff comments. I'd like to begin by once again congratulating Kim Nakahodo for receiving the original award for outstanding assistance for excellence in, in that role. Very well deserved, Kim, and thank you for everything that you do for the city. There are a number of items in the packet for your perusal, the upcoming city items of note, quarterly status of city projects and purchases report, YMCA monthly financial report for August twenty twenty, and the Friday in the Park concerts year-end reports. Be happy to try to answer any questions about those if you have any. All right. Well, that concludes staff comments and I'll begin council member comments by calling on Councilmember Toll.
I want to say congratulations to Kim and thank you for everybody that got the Equity and Inclusion Committee up and running. I actually have a question slash comment for Sarah Copeland. The streetcar is getting another little addition and I was wondering what North Kansas City needs to do to get in on the conversation as they expand.
Well, it's probably a better question for Tom Garrand, the executive director of the Streetcar Authority, to see what he believes it would take to revive the discussion of, of a northern extension.
Okay, I'm on it. I'll get back to you next meeting.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Just short and sweet tonight. First of all, congratulations to Assistant City Administrator Kim Nakahodo on her award, Best Assistant City Administrator in the Nation. So congrats to her. Thank Mr. Bronz for serving again his community. Look forward to working with him. And the other thing on Armour Road, I covered under that part of the segment. So thank you very much. That's it.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, congratulations to Kim. Well deserved, I'm sure. Of Lisa's thoughts there, and I'd love to have that thing, but from the last time they planned, did a, you know, what it's gonna cost, we don't have the money anymore. So for the streetcar, it was quite a, quite a bill. And I don't think we literally have it in the bank gaming anymore, so. And for Public Works, I noticed something today as I was going down to CBS. If you're going down twenty-first, westbound, turn on Clay Street. You go down to the next corner, which is twentieth, I guess, where the, where the old Clayton Hotel was. You have to enter the intersection at least ten feet to see around the shrubbery. It's dangerous. And I know you guys come by there and just cut them down. So if you take care of that, I don't know if the city right away or the owner of the land where the hotel used to be, but it is very dangerous. I like to see it taken care of. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes, congrats, Kim. Echoing everyone. Also, I really appreciate the community members that did participate in tonight's meeting. It's always nice to hear from the community. We love feedback. We love, you know, to represent your voice and I think we did well for that tonight. I do again applaud Lisa Toll for initiating and of course, Tony initiating that Equity and Inclusion Committee and everybody putting that together. I know I'm not gonna like hand it to the right people there, but I love the community engagement on that. And with the sewer rate increase, I can't help but just like, anytime we increase a bill or things like that, I just feel like there has to be some sort of recommendation to the community. So all I have is, you know, if it's yellow, let it mellow. That's a little childhood tip there. So that's it.
Councilmember Farr?
Congratulations, Kim. Well deserved. My next question is, is when does the leaf picker upper come by?
Pat, do you have a comment about that?
Yeah, that varies every year depending on when it's time, but it's usually the second or third week of October.
So sometime this month.
Oh, yeah.
I, I have another question. Dr. Bush's dentist office down off of Twentieth and Clay on the corner. He has had construction equipment, dumpsters and whatever in the street right away for the past year. Does this, does this permit give him however long he wants to, to park it in, in the public right away?
Well, I guess that's a question for Sarah, but I do know there is a limit on permits, a time limit.
Well, it must not be for him because his has been there at least a year.
We'll take a look at that, sir.
Well, I mean, I, I tried to go down to CBS today. Construction equipment was out in, I don't know, Swift with nobody monitoring it. I mean, something needs to be done about this for somebody gets hurt. That's all I had.
So noted, sir. We, we will look at that issue. Councilmember DeLong?
All right. I also want to congratulate Kim on the award. I was glad we were able to witness that and, and see that happen. I have a question for staff. We previously suspended utility shut-offs, but we, that's no longer suspended, correct?
That is correct.
And have we shut anybody off, either residential or business?
Yes, sir. I believe we have renewed shut-offs. Finance Manager Nick Hawkins, do you have any comments? Is Nick on?
Yes, yes. We have shut off a, a number of residents. We, I do not believe we have shut off any businesses except for one that had been on the shut-off list for some time. I think maybe even going back a year. But yes, we have resumed shut-offs as of beginning of September.
Okay. And so, I mean, my, my feelings on that is continue to see people in a struggle with COVID and, and jobs and everything else. Might be something we consider looking at again, whether or not we wanted to extend what we had done previously.
Can I ask a question going with that really quick? When you're shutting them off and it's a resident, are we giving them Northland Assistance contact number since we are giving them money for those, those things? Do we hand that out when we're turning their electricity off?
No ma'am, we aren't. Part of our concern about that is that to some degree, we'd be, we, we already, if they're using it for utility assistance, there, we're getting the money, you know, money that was given as a grant to somebody else is coming back to the city. Now, if it's already being done, that's one thing. We felt that for us to actively solicit using grant funds to reimburse ourselves, so to speak, to pay ourselves for utilities was perhaps not entirely proper. So we, we are not actively telling people about Northland Assistance Center possibilities.
Okay, and I'm really sorry, Brian. Continue.
No, no, I've completely lost my train of thought. It's probably a good thing. Oh, okay. Here we go. Get back to my list. I want to specifically thank Jessica Lawyer for her work on the Quality and Inclusion Advisory Committee. I certainly believe this will have impact for years to come and I, and I think we'll see new people participate in our process. And I also thank you to everyone else. I know it was kind of a, a group effort of people that worked on that. So I just want to thank everyone that's contributed to that. And that's all I got.
Councilmember Saper?
Kudos to Kim. She does a great job. And I feel confident that each council member will seek out and be approached by a wide, wide diversity of people who want to be on the Equity and Inclusion Committee. And for those out there who are listening in the community, please come forward and contact your council member if you're at all interested. Please.
And Councilmember Smith? Kim, possible way to be. You are a wonderful part of our city. As far as shut-offs, that was not something I intended to talk about, but I would, Eric, I would advocate going in and sharing that. It's money that's out there. People may not know about it. And it's there for this exact reason. So if we're gonna shut their power, water, electric off, I don't see any qualm in sharing assistance, especially when it's one mere blocks from where they live. I would, I would definitely advocate sharing that rather than shutting them off. That can be a larger council discussion another time though. Other than that, good job, everybody. It's been two and a half hours of regular meeting. So way for stick, way to stick with it. That's all for me. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just have a question. I never knew we cut off utilities at water. We don't cut off power and gas, do we?
No. Excellent point. Just water.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mayor Steele?
I think we've covered everything.
I will move to adjourn.
Well, no, we, we do have.
Oh.
I tried.
Item number thirty, Consideration of a Request to Hold in Recession Into an Executive Session As requested by the City Administrator to be held on this date on a real estate matter pursuant to Missouri Revised Statute Section six-ten point zero-two-one-two.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Saper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? You are muted, Councilmember Smith, but I read your lips.
Yeah, you got me.
Yes.
See you at the other meeting.
Would you all like to reconvene at say nine thirty-five?
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Just need five, Bobby.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bryant?
No.
Worst.
No.